Good morning, everybody.
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 Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, October 22, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski Parks, Perry Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves and Mr. Zine seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are items noticed for public hearing. Item number one, the applicant consents to a continuance to November 7.
Colleagues, item number one, we have a request to continue this item to November 7. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item one is continued.
And item number two, the applicant consents to a continuance to December 12. Excuse me, December 2.
Colleagues, request to continue item number two. Also without objection.
And item number three, the applicant consents to a continuance to November 14.
Request to continue item number three, members. Item number three, without objection, is continued.
Item number four is a public convenience or necessity in Council District 10, and I understand there's a request from the council office to continue that matter for two weeks, which would be November 5.
Okay, request to continue item number four, also without objection.
Item number five is a public convenience or necessity. Findings are necessary, and that's in Council District 12. A motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Okay, we do have a card on item number five. Let's call this item special. Next item, please.
Next item is, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items 6 through 17. Item number six is confirmation of a commissioner.
Okay, let's hold item six on the desk temporarily. We're going to dispense with consent items and then come back to the commission nominees as a first order of business. Ms. Perry? 10 calls special by Ms. Perry. Let me announce for the record, colleagues, that on items 6 through 16, public hearings have been held. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen these public hearings. Are there any other requests for specials? Item 6 through 16, any other specials?
16. And, Mr. President, if we could take that out of order, we've got a presentation we'd like to make.
Okay, item 16 called special by Mr. Ludlow, and he requests that we take this matter out of order. Unless there's an objection, we'll take item 16 as the first non-consent item. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on number eight, please. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 17 through 55, 10 votes are required for consideration. 17 and 18 are commissioners.
Let's hold 17 and 18 on the desk temporarily. These are commission confirmations. I do have a card on item 26. Let's call that matter special. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and public hearings are closed on those matters. Members wishing to call any other specials, Mr. Reyes.
Item number 19, please.
19, call special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Any other specials, Mr. Smith?
Move to reconsider number 15, call special.
Okay, let's get back to that in just a second. Members before us are items 17 through 55. Are there any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Members, we have now a motion by Mr. Smith to reconsider item 15. Let's open the roll in reconsideration. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, item 15 is reconsidered, and shall we call this item special? Called special by Mr. Smith. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 56 is a closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold closed session matters on the desk.
And then on the continuation agenda, item number 57 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Colleagues, item 57 now before us. Public hearing has been held in committee. Any members of the council wishing to call item 57 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up the commissioners at this time?
Mr. Ludlow, is item 16 a quick item? Okay, let's take item 16, and then we'll take the three commission appointments. And before getting to item 16, let me recognize Councilmember Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, please welcome a very special delegation from various provinces in China. Their government officials learning about the American government systems, and they're here in City Hall today. Please give them a big welcome. Xie xie.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Let me, colleagues, recognize, we have Mr. Zine, item 16 currently before us. So, from his unusual microphone, Mr. Ludlow, do we have a motion on item 16? Or did you want to speak on it?
Yes. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. President. Two things. One is obviously stand here in support of item 16 and wanted to make, in the context of that, a special presentation. Members, we've had several of our colleagues that have introduced motions over the last couple of weeks on the issue of illegal dumping in an effort to try to clean up Los Angeles. And most notably, in the presentation by Councilmember Han, I think we had a great discussion in here about how important it is to do everything we can as a city to try to prevent illegal dumping from really seizing on our neighborhoods. Well, today, I'm standing with a great community leader, Patricia Cross, who is a member of the Country Club Park Neighborhood Association. Over the years, she has been committed to working on issues related to graffiti and illegal dumping. Today, she is receiving an award for leading city authorities to the arrest of an individual who illegally dumped construction debris at Third and Pico. She's the first person, to my knowledge, to receive a reward under this program and is the first case that included hazmat materials. This illegal dumping reward program, as many of you know, began in September of '02, and so far, there have been 127 arrests, and the program has included over 20 inspectors. Standing with us also today are Audrey Moore and Rodney Lucas from Public Works, inspectors from our Street Use Division. And we wanted to, and also Gary Harris is also here with them. But most of all, I wanted to thank Patricia for her courage and her commitment to supporting all the work that we do here in the city of L.A. and for really doing what we're asking so many citizens to do, which is to get involved and to help be the real eyes and ears of protecting our communities. And so, it is with a great deal of pleasure in connection with this motion today that I present on behalf of all of the colleagues here in the city of L.A., this reward for $1,000 to Patricia Cross for her involvement and engagement that led to the arrest of somebody illegally dumping in our neighborhoods. And so with that, colleagues, I'd ask for a round of applause for Patricia Cross and all of her work. Say a word or two. And I know we're moving along, just wanted her to get a chance to say a quick thank you.
Sure. Yes, I want to thank the council and the city of Los Angeles for all the hard work they do, but I also would like to make an appeal to the people here to put in their cellphone the number for the city services. These fine people behind me are the ones who made this possible, this conviction. They showed up promptly, and they made sure this gentleman was convicted. So, the number is, would you tell us, Audrey?
It's 213-485-3711.
Great. So, it's real easy when you see dumping and you're in your car, and like half the city has cellphones. So, just call that number when you see it, and that'll help us clear it up. it up. We can't always catch them, but you might catch them. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would obviously ask for an eye vote on this item, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Other members wishing to be heard on item 16? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number six is confirmation of Mr. Walter Doherty to the Employee Relations Committee, excuse me, Board and Personnel Committee report recommends approval.
Okay, colleagues, we have consideration of Mr. Doherty currently before us. We do have a committee report recommending approval. Are there members wishing to be heard at this time? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Doherty, I remember we met just a few days ago.
That's correct. Nice to see you again. Last Wednesday.
It goes by quick, a week ago. If you can just briefly explain your experience in this arena and how your inclusion will help benefit the city of Los Angeles.
Well, I have approximately 18 years' experience as a labor arbitrator and hearing officer, hearing disputes between employers, both public and private, and unions. I also was the executive officer for the Los Angeles County Employee Relations Commission, which is a board analogous to the Los Angeles City Employee Relations Board, only it has jurisdiction over county employees. And I've also had experiences on both labor and management in my prior experience before I entered into the neutral arena. And I served on the board previously for four years. I left before my term expired because I had taken a position with the State Mediation Service, and there was a concern of a conflict there. Now that I'm no longer working with state mediation, I would welcome the opportunity to, once again, be on the board. I certainly enjoyed the opportunity to assist, to the extent possible, in resolving labor management disputes between L.A. city management and its various unions. And it's the type of work I enjoy doing, and in serving on the board, you get a wide, variety of labor management issues that come before you. Many of them are very interesting, highly technical, and again, it's something I enjoy doing.
Thank you. And as the chair of the Personnel Committee for the city of Los Angeles, it's important that we have labor doing the work and management recognizing the contributions and the balance. And as we see this region right now suffering some very severe strikes within the grocery industry, the transportation industry, law enforcement, the Yellow County Sheriff's Department with blue flues, and I know that the ERB is very important to the city, to the employees of the city of Los Angeles, and to the taxpayers, the people who receive the services, to make sure there's fairness and there's balance. And I know that your dedication, your experience serves well, and the fact that you've been appointed by, recommended by the president of the city council speaks that the council president, with the knowledge, the experience you have, will be a great benefit to the people of Los Angeles. And a lot of people don't know about the ERB and what they do, but there's a tremendous amount of work that's done there to maintain peace and tranquility in that labor force that's delivering services and variety departments that affect the people of Los Angeles.
Yes, I believe it's certainly challenging and certainly worthy work that the board does, and I think to a certain extent that the fact that the board is under the radar screen most often is, I think, a testimony to the fact that the board does its job.
And they do it very well, and I think your inclusion in that, with your previous experience on that board, as well as other experience in that labor arena, will be a benefit to not only the employees, but to management and to the people of Los Angeles that rely upon that service every day. So I would ask my colleagues to support this nomination by our council president and serve well, and we want to keep you on that and not loan you to solve these other labor disputes. You'll stay here, take care of the matters we got at home.
I was one of the mediators three years ago with the MTA strike, so a 32-day strike on my watch, so maybe I should stay away from that one.
Stay away from that, okay, thank you.
Ms. Grohl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to also thank you for recommending a Council District 2 representative to this board. And, Mr. Doherty, we had the chance to talk last week as well in the Personnel Committee, where I was present, and think that your experience and knowledge base is going to be a real asset to the ERB, and think that we are lucky to have you as part of our team. So, I just wanted to say congratulations and encourage all of my colleagues to support you and know that we are all interested in the labor management issues and ways in which we can better serve the city. So, hopefully, you will call upon us for advice and counsel as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on item number six? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. Forthwith on item six, please.
Congratulations, thank you.
Next item.
Item number 17 is confirmation of Mr. Arturo Ibarra to the South L.A. APC, and as for confirmation of council president's appointment, public hearing has not been held.
Okay. Item 17 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on item 17. Public hearing is satisfied. Now let's hear from members of the council, beginning with Ms. Perry.
Just to say a few words about Arturo. I have known him and known of him and have witnessed the dedication and commitment he has to community, and I mean all communities, in the Watts area and South Los Angeles. And while I'm not fortunate enough to have him located specifically in the Ninth Council District, he's just a short distance away, and I just want to say he is a treasure, a real treasure for our city, and works tirelessly to improve the quality of life for all communities in South Los Angeles, and knows communities like the back of his hand because he has worked so hard for so many years organizing and empowering communities block by block. So I wanted to rise and just say a few words in support, and I know we'll have a unanimous vote today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Right after the riots, I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Ibarra. At that time, he made it very clear, he was very passionate, that there were whole communities that were in isolation because of the inability to speak English and the inability for them to connect with the existing infrastructure, the support systems that were there that were not designed to understand the Spanish language. And Mr. Ibarra was one of those persons who stood tall, took a lot of pressure, a lot of heat from a lot of folks, in his attempt to just deal with human beings as human beings. And his effort was extraordinary. He was reaching out to anyone that would listen at the time. This was back in 1993. So, I am pleased to see you here today. I think we lost touch there for a while, but I just want to echo my colleague, Councilmember Perry's words in that you are a treasure for the city. I'm glad you didn't give up. You had daunting challenges, and I know they're still there, but you continue. And I just want to thank you for sharing with us that effort in which tries to make life, quality of life, better for everyone. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Reyes.
And colleagues, Mr. Ibarra is a nominee from the 15th Council District. Let me recognize Councilmember Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, Mr. Ibarra, I'm rushing into council chambers. I've been in Watts this morning, helping to build the 100th home for Habitat for Humanity. And, thank you, I was nailing nails, but I wanted to be here specifically to rise and also add my words of, first of all, appreciation, that you have agreed to serve again for the city of Los Angeles. There's no greater example of public service than our commissioners, who really volunteer their time to do these various commission jobs, which ultimately improve, I think, the quality of life for people, particularly the area planning commissions. And it was our goal, when we came up with the area planning commissions and the city charter reform, that it would translate to having people who knew their community, people who knew their neighborhoods, people who knew the issues without having to steady up on them, and they would be able to make the kind of decisions that impacted people because they lived there, and they know the people, they know the neighbors, and that's exactly who you are. You have lived and worked in the community of Watts for as long as I can remember, and you're, of course, head and founder of the Watts Latino Century Organization, working to bring together people of various backgrounds and working on issues and problems that really do impact them. I was just with you a couple of weeks ago as we announced a new program, helping first-time homebuyers to understand the system and to be able to access financial help in buying their first home, and that just shows what kind of person you are. You know that, first and foremost, people need a decent place to live and that there is nothing that improves their lives more than homeownership. So I am extremely pleased to support your nomination today, to serve on the area planning commission, and really want a thank you. You know, when we were running for city council in the 15th district, the toughest candidate forum was one where Arturo Ibarra provided the questions, and you were tough on everybody running for this seat, and you wanted to make sure that you had commitments from everyone who wanted to serve on the city council representing your community, what we believed about housing, what we believed about crime, what we believed about improving people's lives through things like homeownership, how we could lift people out of poverty to improve their lives. So you have held me accountable since I've been elected, and there's no one better, in my opinion, than to have you serve on the area planning commission. I know the decisions you make will be thorough, will be thoughtful, and will ultimately serve the interest of not us down here in the city council, not even yourself, but you will make decisions that serve the interests of the people, particularly in the Watts community. So, thank you for serving.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Jeanne Skan, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Other members wishing to be heard on the appointment of Mr. Ibarra? Seeing none, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. I want to make a couple of remarks here, if I may.
Sure, just briefly.
Sure. Mr. President, Chair of the Council, honorable members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank all the support that I have received here from Councilwoman Jeanne Perry, from Councilman, Council, our Councilman, Ed Reyes, and from my Councilwoman, Jeanne Skan. I am really amazed by, amazed and, to some extent, very much surprised for all this support, and I just want to say that, that, well, I want to give special thanks to the president of the council, honorable council member Alex Padilla, for supporting my nomination as well. And I just can say that if I live up to the year 2008, I'll do as much as I can, and I will continue honoring my civic duty and to continue serving my community.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the service. Forthwith on item 17, please. Next item.
Item number 18 is confirmation of Ms. Helen Ann Johnson to the Board of Animal Services Commissioners. Public hearing was not held in committee, and this is a confirmation of the council president's appointment.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, please come forward. We do have one card on item 18. The council calls forward Ms. Phyllis Doherty.
I first would like to thank the city of Los Angeles.
Let me ask you to wait for just a second. We do have one speaker card. Let's hear from Ms. Doherty briefly, and then we'll continue. It's okay, to hear from you and members of the council.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak for Helen Johnson, because I understand usually the public doesn't get to speak on these appointments. But it's unfortunate that recently our Animal Regulation Commission has become polarized, as you know, by political and economic interests rather than just the public safety mandates that their responsibility. But Helen Johnson has refused to be part of all of this. She has spoken for the animals, she has spoken for the people of all communities. She's consistently concerned with the lower economic areas and that education and spay-neuter is available to these areas. She has never forgotten the goals of the department or the goals of the commission, and we thank her for that. It's unfortunate there have been attacks and threats by people who, by their own admission, never entered the shelters, and I'm going to speak openly that she's become a target of some of this, and I hope that that under no way will affect anyone's decision here because this is a woman that really, really cares. She's helped the department, and she's helped all the people of this city.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item 18. We now turn to council discussion. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was proud to recommend Helen the first time, and I am proud to recommend her for her reconfirmation. She is a longtime resident of the Ninth District in South Los Angeles and brings a very strong common sense, very grounded and practical approach to the problems faced daily by the people who live in South Los Angeles in her community. And so I am proud again to have her sit here before you for reconfirmation, and I do hope that all of you will agree with me by giving her an eye vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Other members wishing to be heard? Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I also rise in support of Helen Johnson, and again, thank you, first and foremost, for saying yes to serve, particularly now on the Board of Animal Services. It seems to be sort of a difficult time in the city of Los Angeles, a difficult time for the manager of the Department of Animal Services, and we know there are issues that are polarizing this city and beyond in terms of what we can provide in terms of animal services throughout our city. And we know that we want the city to be compassionate and humane, first and foremost, and just really want to thank you for agreeing to serve, and I wholeheartedly support your nomination, Helen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Ms. Johnson, did you want to say a few words?
I just want to thank you, and I want to thank Councilman Han, and I thank my council lady, Perry, for having the confidence in me that they have, and I have enjoyed serving my city and hope to continue to do so. Thank you.
And we certainly appreciate your help. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. Forthwith, please, on item 18. Next item.
Mr. President, there is a special meeting for 10:45. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
It's after 10:45. Are there, I believe some of the matters called special are rather simple. Let's dispense with some of the items called special before proceeding to the special meeting. We will leave discussion, however, of the closed session items to the end of our agenda.
Okay. Item number five is a public hearing item. There is a card that has been submitted, and a motion is required to grant or deny the application. It's a public convenience or necessity in Council District 12.
And we do have one speaker card submitted for item number five. Let's hear from Joseph and Susan Memen. Please come forward. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My wife just stepped to the restroom for a second, so if can, we give, we just had a long drive down here, so. Yeah, we just had a long ride all the way from the valley over here, so my wife just went to the restroom for one second, and if you can give us a moment, she'll be in.
Okay, why don't we come back to this item, then?
Appreciate it.
Okay, please have a seat.
Thank you.
Let's proceed to the next item and return to item number five in just a minute.
Item number 10 was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry, item number 10.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak very quickly on this item. This building has posed great challenges for the residents who live in it for many, many years, I would say for more than a decade. It has not been maintained properly, it has not been secured to the, with an eye towards the safety of the residents. There are many building and safety issues associated inside, and so I have asked the city attorney to not only look at bringing the building into overall compliance, but also the Environmental Affairs Department to take a look at the possibility of mold and spores inside of the building, as many of the walls have been open for more than a year, and there's a great evidence that there's water dripping throughout the structure. The halls have a lot of moisture, and I believe that it poses significant, not only security risks, compliance issues, but also health risks as well. And I appreciate the support of my colleagues on this today, and would like to get an eye vote so we can move forward to making the quality of life in this building one that we would expect and demand for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Other members wishing to be heard?
And also, I'd like to get an updated report on that.
Okay. So with those So with those additional requests, if we're ready to proceed, are there other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item 10 is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 15, called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for calling it for reconsideration. We've got folks here from the LAPD. I see them there. Appreciate your coming from SID and the detectives in the sex crimes area. This has to do with DNA testing of sexual assault evidence, and it's just a very important matter. We've been following it at the Public Safety Committee. We're going to continue to follow it, and I'm going to continue to ask for the LAPD to do even more than it has been doing so that we can -- Mr. President, can we have order in the council chambers?
It's quiet in there. Sergeants, if I can get your help in clearing out the wings behind the horseshoe here.
That's Mitch.
Sergeants.
We need to do a lot more than we have been doing, and the folks who are in the room today, I really do appreciate everything you've been doing to get things on the right track, because this is an area where we absolutely need to change the mindset and the culture of not only our police department, but of other police departments. They need to understand that when there is a sexual assault, DNA evidence should be the first thing you look to in doing your investigation, not the icing on the cake at the end of the investigation. And there are a whole lot of complicated issues that one has to get into to make sure that happens. I just want to make sure that it's something that we keep our eyes on. And I just want to note that, you know, colleagues, we sign a lot of reports, a lot of reports come whipping through us. I wouldn't say that I agree. It's not a big deal, but I think the way that the report that came out of Public Safety was written was inartful. We had, for example, item two says, "We request the Board of Police Commissioners to review the moratorium on destruction of DNA evidence." That's not actually what we meant at committee. That had been a preliminary recommendation of the CAO, and instead what we talked about at the committee was, we need to have a policy developed, we need to have best practices developed in this area so that if it can be determined that you don't need to hold on to this evidence forever, that the LAP doesn't needlessly waste time and resources holding on to it. So I don't think we want the commission to look into reviewing the moratorium. What we really want is for folks to look into best practices as to handling and storage of DNA evidence, and then once we get a report on that, then we can decide how to go forward. I don't want people just to right now go into an examination of the moratorium, because there ought to be a moratorium until we have a better policy, and right now we don't. And the second item, item 3A, it's drafted very inartfully, whether or not the LAPD has a policy on handling evidence and what guidance is given to detectives, and if not, to develop a policy for detectives that includes real-time testing. I mean, it sounds like it was translated from Mongolian. That's not what we wanted. What I want to know is, right now, is there a policy in the LAPD when there's a sexual assault and evidence is taken from the survivor to test that evidence immediately? If that's not the policy, I want that to be the policy, and I'd like to have an explanation given as to whether that policy is going to be developed, or if not, why not? And finally, I want to make sure that all the detectives, Detective Lampkin, who work with you and under you and throughout the LAPD, understand that this is an option that they have. That was the point. That was made clear at committee. It's been made less clear with this report, and I just wanted to state it since I see you all here, and I appreciate your attention to this, and I appreciate your hard work in this area. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, and I thank Mr. Weiss for calling this special. Members, this is one of the items that every quarter we have a report in Public Safety Committee. And essentially, what we did here in Public Safety Committee this last time was something reasonably positive. We have had access to state grant to do cold hits on previously stored kits, and in fact, it has been very, very successful in LAPD and the Scientific Investigation Division. And they, in fact, indicated that they will complete by the end of this year the cold hit storage. In addition to that, Mr. Weiss is absolutely right. The report does talk, although perhaps it was inartful in the beginning, it does talk about needing both quarterly reports, reports back from the detective division, the requirement and the building of a best practices for storage. Right now, there is a lot of discussion going on in the area of DNA as to whether or not it does need to be frozen, whether or not it diminishes in any way if it's not frozen. We've also asked and instructed the CLA to look back, not only legislative issues that might affect this, but also where we might fund and store this, particularly if it has to be done in frozen quantities and frozen storage capacity. That may be a future MICLA requirement that we may have to do this. But we were hearing very, very good information from our Los Angeles Police Department in terms of their -- because, again, the city has hired criminalists and has hired, I think, double the number that we previously had, we now are able to do a turnaround on the high-profile cases and the high-priority cases in a much quicker time than what had occurred previously with the backlog. So we started to make a dent, but we know it's critical, we know we need to continue the effort to maintain the criminalists. We are going to be moving into new headquarters in, I believe, 2006, when the new crime lab will be up and running. And so it's important to keep current on the state-of-the-art. It's important to keep as much as we can the staffing up so that we can really help our detectives effectively solve these crimes in the most technologically feasible manner and give them the tools with which to do that. So this is essentially a good marker, a good report. We've done well. We added staff. We just need to maintain that and know that we are really putting those resources to the best possible crime-solving techniques out there.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 15. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 19 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Item 19 is more for the sake of clarity. I know we have these city attorneys that have been working on this, but I want to thank the Fire Department and City Attorney's Office for putting this together. Essentially, what we're doing is removing a site that was designated before along one edge of a corner in the Pico Union area for a fire station. And we're going to keep the fire station, but we're going to move it on the same block on the other side of this block. Just for the sake of clarity, people are going to be saying, "Well, what happened to our fire station? It's no longer going to have a Pico Union. What happened?" Well, we are going to keep the fire station. It's just being moved on the other side of the block. And I just want to share that with those who are listening from my district and to congratulate the CRA, I mean, the city attorney and the Fire Department for their hard work on this. Again, so thank you very much. Urgent eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard on item 19? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 26 was called special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
So, item 26 now before us, and the council calls forward Robert Mensel. Is Robert Mensel still with us? Robert Mensel going once, going twice. This will close then the public comment for item 26. Are there members wishing to be heard on item 26? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. And let's try coming back to item number five. Are we ready? Okay. Back to item number five. If I can ask yourself to introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Susan Maman, and my husband, Joseph. And we're the proud owners of the Arco AMPM in Chatsworth that are applying. And I've lived in that area my whole life, and I'm very happy to have a business there. And it's -- we're applying for the convenience of our customers. They expect to get beer and wine at an Arco station. And Arco AMPM. And that's about it. Arco expects the highest of employee training, and we keep up with that. And what else can I tell you? We have the highest-scoring pride in the area, which means we have a very neat and organized store, so that's all.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item number five. Chair recognizes Mr. Smith.
The community is supporting this. There's no opposition to it. This facility has gotten the highest grades from Arco. Everybody's for it. Ask your approval. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to approve on item number five. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Yes, colleagues, the time is now 11 o'clock. Let's temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Garcia, Groh, Han, Labange, Ledo, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Rivas, Weiss, signed Padilla. Fourteen members present.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is now in session. We do have a three-item agenda, all which are related in terms of substance, so we can, without objection, consider these items, one, two, and three concurrently. Let me begin by recognizing Councilmember Parks.
I'd like to ask staff to come. We have a couple of slides to follow the presentation, but for the council colleagues...
Have order in chambers, please, members of the council? If I can ask for your attention, please, for this presentation. And I know we all have staff behind us in the horseshoe. If I can ask conversations to be kept to a minimum so we can give our attention to Mr. Parks here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really appreciate the opportunity. We had a very extensive Budget and Finance Committee meeting yesterday, and for council colleagues, I'd really ask you to pay attention on these issues over the next several minutes because it's going to impact the way we do business throughout the rest of this fiscal year and through next fiscal year. Just to set the backdrop is that in the three special reports that we have today deal with the first financial statement that was requested by the prior Budget Committee, which is number two. We also have the special one that deals with the issues that, as far as the $47 million shortfall, and then we have a unfreeze as item three. But just to give you a backdrop, and I'll use, go out of order, talk about number two first. The City of Los Angeles was advised by, recently by the state government because of the budget shortfalls, that we're roughly $47 million in a deficit. Special one deals with how we intend to cover that $47 million. But we also, in requesting these reports as far as financial status, Mr. Fujioka has advised us that, under the current level of spending and looking at our revenues, the City of LA could project out to somewhere in the neighborhood of $50 million shortfall just in our current budget. So as we put up that first slide, shows that we're looking at during this fiscal year roughly a $97 million shortfall. And so with that, certainly, we can be concerned about whether the results or what we're going to be dealing with. Certainly, the vehicle license is our number-one issue of shortfall for the state of California that comes to the city. But when you read through these three reports, you'll see that some of our departments, particularly the Police General Services, ITA, and several, have gone forward on a spending level that far exceeds what their budgeted resources. It puts the city in some jeopardy as relates to dealing with this year's budget. What's important for us to realize is that we know that there, and using the term, that structural issues dealing with last year's budget. Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton have done an assessment of looking at those structural issues for this year, and we run somewhere in the neighborhood of $180 million to $230 million shortfall, depending on whether you're going to be conservative or not as it relates to this issue. I think it's something that is so important that we realize in many issues that this report is going to dictate not only how we get through this year, but really sends the clear message as to what and how we're going to deal with '04 and '05. If you, we go to the next second slide, we can show you what some of the impact or what the CAO is recommending on how we close the $47 million cut. We're talking about a FEMA grant that came about to the city due to an audit, which brought about $3 million in. But what we also are fully aware of is about $41 million of this fund comes from the UB. When we debated last year in the budget of putting money aside from the UB account so that we have an opportunity to look and evaluate as we went through this current fiscal year as to whether we're going to have spending at a rate of proposed budget or hold back money. The $41 million is going to come from that UB. But I think what's most important that came out of the discussions, and this is something that I think is very important for all of us, is that the 80-plus million dollars that was put in the UB, the likelihood is that none of those items that are funded in the UB will ever be, will ever be able to appropriate the money. Because of the anywhere from $168 to $230 million deficit in this budget, the UB will never be implemented as it relates to any of the items. And so one of our reports that talks about basically the $41 million, how we're going to balance the $47, is, becomes really a non-issue because when we go through that entire report, we can debate what should be priorities, we can debate what will be the first thing to go. The issue I think that's important for all of us to know is that none of those items are going to be funded under this current budget crisis that we're in. The third slide that we have that deals with projected expenditures, which are creating the $50 million, the deficit depends, basically, that depends on revenues and expenditures. The CAO will continue to monitor and report back on the status. The reserve fund, basically, if it's needed to cover this $50 million shortfall, it will put us below our mandated 2% city policy as relates to having a general fund, as far as our general fund revenue. So that is a key issue. That's a mandate by this council that we maintain that 2% city policy. If we go to the third slide, and this, I think, is the most significant, that when we project out from the deficit for 2004, 2005, with ranges 187 to 234, and CAO is admittedly saying that these figures, 187, is a very conservative number, but when we look at the other issues that we know are coming before us, it will be quickly evaluated that the 234 is probably a more likely number. Some of the items that could impact the forecast are MICLA. We know that in the next week or two, we'll be making decisions about the new Parker Center, which is proposed to be funded by MICLA. What was discussed at the Finance Committee yesterday was that we're in an unusual situation. We have a significant range for debt level, but we have little money to pay it. Where in the past, we had significant money, but the debt level was so large that we could not put anything else into the MICLA fund. We also know outstanding issues, state budget. Several things should be of concern to us, even with the $47 billion shortfall on the current budget. The likelihood is we could end up with additional deficit because of the new administration talking about eliminating the vehicle license. Also, there's a lawsuit that deals with the way the state structured the budget, which has been viewed as being unconstitutional. There's another lawsuit that's forthcoming as to whether the state can sell 10 to 11 billion dollars' worth of deficit bonds. And then there's a third lawsuit from Orange County that deals with the property tax, Prop. 13, which, if all of these things come to pass, we could end up with over a $20 billion shortfall at the state level, which, again, will impact the city again. We know that also within our city that we have... Uh, we know that, uh, also, within our city, that we have, uh, two or three major contracts that are coming before the council in the near future, the Fire M.O.U., and at least two management contracts dealing with the police and fire. And so, these are things that I think we have to keep in context as we go forward on deliberation. Uh, when we talk about also in future, certain things such as increase in the rubbish collection, cost of living, water quality, workers' comp, are all issues that will impact our five-year forecast. If we look at the chart, uh, as to the fourth, uh, page of the, uh, handout, what you'll see is the five-year projection of where we compare the forecasts as it relates to expenditures versus revenues. For '04, '05, we'd be have a shortfall of two-thirty-four. Uh, '05, '06, a shortfall of three-hundred-and-ninety million. '06, '07, shortfall of four-hundred-and-eighty-three million. Uh, '07, '08, a shortfall of five-hundred-and-twenty-one million. And '08, '09, a shortfall of five-hundred-and-sixteen million. I think it's clear that we have a significant issue as it relates to the budgetary process. Uh, certainly, there are some recommendations. One of the things that I draw your attention to is on, uh, the Special Two. If you look at page two and three, and if, look at, uh, items fifteen through twenty-one, are really the issues that address some of the city's, uh, uh, recommendations of how to impact, uh, this, uh, process. The certainly adoption of a hiring freeze, uh, that, uh, also, I think, two important policy decisions, as far as not using one-time money for, uh, multi-year projects, and also making sure that any new program position that are funded, that was identified, funding source, uh, that's part of this, uh, proposal on item, uh, Special Two, and it's two important items deal with. We also, uh, gave some additional directions to the, uh, C.L.A. and to the C.A.O. yesterday that we, uh, look at, but not only budget reductions, by bringing department heads and their staffs in immediately to start talking about some of the budget process and what we could do to stop, uh, the shortfall or their overspending, so then we can get to the cuts. The other issue, we've asked the C.A.O. and C.L.A. to come back with information about, uh, revenue enhancements and fee enhancements. And the third, which, uh, is also a mandate or a request, is that on, uh, item twenty-one on Special Two, that asked the C.A.O. to meet with unions to discuss ways in which unions can assist the city in closing the budget gap, and then those contracts that have, uh, uh, reopeners, that we invoke that re-opener and go forward to discuss how the unions can be of assistance to the City of L.A. These are some of the things that, uh, we've discussed for well over an hour-plus in Finance Committee to discuss these issues and bring them forward. We think it's absolutely essential, the council realizes the significance of our budget problems, that we look also at all three of these items, whether it deals with the policy as, uh, unfreezes, or we're dealing with what the, how we close the forty-seven million dollar shortfall, or the other issues of how we intend to address the issues in our financial report are all fundamentally important, not only to the Finance Committee, but for every member of council. Uh, certainly, uh, I think Mrs. Misakowski has some additional comments, uh, that came out as the Vice Chair of the, uh, Finance Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Uh, I think before we hear from any council members, we've got a couple queued up. I can ask for staff presentation, and then we'll, uh, hear from Ms. Misakowski as the first speaker, so, um, Mr. Fujioka, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I try to keep my, uh, my comments brief, because the, the Chair of your Budget and Finance covered a lot of my issues. We just passed out a document that's titled Briefing Materials for State Budget Impact. As, and this, there's some information I want to go over very briefly, because we'd also, it's our intent to share the same information with our neighborhood councils, with other commissions, with other individuals or administrative entities that do business with the city. We need to go through an educational process, so individuals understand what the potential impact will be on this city if we lose V.L., our V.L.F. funding, our Vehicle License Fee funding. So, very briefly, in this, in this package of information, you have impact statements, and this is very similar to what we prepared with respect to the, well, in response to the, um, secession movement, where we said, if we should lose this amount of funding, here's the consequence. If we should lose, I mentioned during Budget and Finance, if we lose the entire V.L.F., which is highly possible at this point. If not, if the governor reappeals it, everyone needs to know, on a parallel course, we have a group of citizens who are preparing a referendum, they're collecting the votes right now to put the V.L.F. issue on the March ballot, which would eliminate our V.L.F. funding, and then we'd be, I don't want to say mercy, at the mercy, but we would, we would have to depend on the state to backfill that money. If we lose all of V.L.F., it would equal approximately, uh, uh, all of it is two-hundred-and-thirty-two. We talk about the one-seventy-five, but all of it is two-thirty-two. That's four thousand positions here in the city, based on average salary. But if you go, if you turn to a couple of pages to put this in context, you see a chart of eliminating this amount of money in the general fund, and it lists the total budgets for every city department. To put it in context, if we lose everything, you're eliminating all the departments above the first line, that are just gone. Every department from Community Services, Housing, Emergency Preparedness, Disability, Cultural Affairs, Treasurer, Neighborhood Empowerment, City Clerk, Board of Public Works, My Office, Controller, Animal Services, and so on. But we go on to provide you information on impact statements, and this was given to us by our various departments. Here's what would happen if we have a cut of this magnitude. We go on to provide you some basic information on our current status, where we are with revenue, and then where we are with, with expenditures. This, because this referendum, there are two courses going, either the governor's action or the referendum. It's very important that we take the time to educate our constituents, you know, the, the, the public, of what the consequence will be if we completely lose the V.L.F. funding. We were asked to go back to the table with our labor unions. There is, my concern is what's going to hap, is what will happen once the new governor-elect takes office, and what, if he's going to try and honor that campaign promise with respect to V.L.F. Now, getting into the, um, the two memos. First, we have the, um, the Budget Reduction Memo. What you have is, um, everyone knows that we lost forty-seven million dollars in state funding. Of that, forty-four was from V.L.F., and three was for some, some police grants. This report, our report dated October third and discussed yesterday in council, recommends some actions that should be taken to address that forty-seven million dollars in lost revenue. It speaks to a number of items with the most, most, with, with most of it coming from the U.B. right now, and eliminating money that's currently in the, in the U.B., and some for some very critical public services. It also speaks to an exercise we went through to work with departments, identify the one, three, and five percent budget reduction packages. The amount of money we're taking from departments right now constitutes a one percent reduction. And it, in isolation, doesn't sound like much, but everyone needs to realize, this is the third budget reduction exercise we've imposed on departments. On average, every department has taken between six and seven percent, with some departments taking as much as eleven percent. There's one carve-out, though, that I think is, is real important. We also suggest taking some money from your Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and during Budget and Finance, a concern was, was expressed on how that would impact some of our matching programs for affordable housing. We were asked to, to verify the impact today. This happened yesterday. Now, the timer's real short, and I, we're not sure what we have in the pipeline right now. That, that might be something that we, we, we take a little bit more time on to make sure that we understand the impact, that I lay out what's in the pipeline, and although we think it's, it's fine, and it's something we have to do, in the context, well, given what we're faced with, and the enormity of, of our budget shortfall with respect to the state, the state impact, and what we're tracking, we may want, ask for, uh, it may be prudent to take a little time to look at that. We could have a further discussion on that. But, again, going back to this report, you'll see that on, on the attachments, there's a list of, but particularly, what's in the U.B. now, and what we're recommending that we eliminate to address the forty-seven million dollar shortfall. Now, getting into our first financial status report, as I'm going through this, trying to go through as quickly as possible, it speaks to where our reserve fund is right now, and the fact that we have in the reserve fund a little bit more than what we anticipated as we went through the budget process, and that's the reversions from departments. The, the, right now, after making some adjustments, we have a hundred-and-thirteen million dollars in that reserve fund. We are currently tracking approximately fifty million dollars in department shortfalls or deficits. We anticipate ten of that will be made up through a reimbursement from airports for overtime, but that still means we're tracking a forty million dollar problem. That's in addition to the forty-seven million dollar problem we closed as a consequence of, um, what the state imposed upon us. In this report, we're recommending about ten million dollars in transfers right now to address some immediate needs, needs, departmental needs or shortfalls that must be addressed now to ensure they have sufficient funds to meet payroll, to meet other expenses, um, purchase equipment, and so on. Councilman Parks spoke to a couple of important fiscal policies that we recommended. One is using one-time money only for one-time expenses, very, very critical. The second is to have, is to identify the money when a program comes before your council for approval. What I mentioned in Budget and Finance is that, several months ago, I met, I went up to San Francisco and met with our bond rating agencies, your Moody's, and your Standard &amp; Poor, and so on, for the purpose of, of maintaining our rating as we're getting ready to issue bonds for Prop Q and Prop F and so on. We were successful in maintaining our rating, and everyone knows, major cities in California had their ratings reduced as a consequence of the economy in California. Maintaining it, I felt, was a very significant achievement. But then I took the opportunity, then I asked them, what could we do to improve our rating? Well, they thought I was crazy because of the way the economics are, the, the state and local economics, but yet they said a critical element would be a strong policy that says you use one-time money for one-time expenses. And then the fiscal discipline, which speaks to identifying the money when you come forth a new program, was also important. And there are several other elements, including a capital, uh, improvement plan that, having one in place, which we achieved this year. But it's something that speaks to fiscal discipline that, that's needed at this, at this point in time. The report goes on to recommend the adjustments I referred to, and identified departments that are tracking deficits right now. You heard Councilman Parks speak to the fact that he's going to start pulling in those departments, the Budget and Finance, to ask them, what are they doing, um, with respect to addressing the deficit? Our, from my office, for the last three and a half years, our, our constant mantra has been that the only way we can address this problem is to identify ways to restructure services, to streamline, to achieve economies. That, in addition to identifying ways to not only enhance, but also identify new revenue sources, is the only way we're going to address this problem. I know we've come to in the past with other deficits. I know two years ago, we said it's two-hundred-and-fifty, and we closed that gap. I know last year, we said it's a hundred-and-seventy-five, and we closed that gap. But please remember what we did collectively to close that gap. Remember the hiring freeze. In the hiring freeze, we have departments, and some are listening or behind me, who would say it strangled them, because they couldn't meet core services. But I also remind you that, through, in the last budgets, when we would cut departments, in the subsequent budget, the department would say, restore me to that previous level and give me more. Each and every, what we should tell every department now is that it's over. We cannot restore. Your reduced level is your new level, is the base you should operate from. You should tell, every department should be ordered not to bring us a budget request that says, give me more. They should bring us budget requests that says, this is how I am going to restructure my current organization to achieve some economies, achieve some efficiencies, to streamline. Every, in any department that comes forward and says, give me more, we should tell them, leave the table, come back, tell us how you can do more with less. Now, we developed, within our own resources, and I consolidated assignments, I put together a core group of individuals to create what's called a city improvement team. It's a corny name, but it's, the important, the function is extremely important. We're looking at, and we were asked by Budget and Finance to come back with some of our, some of the programs and whatever we're, we're tracking right now, we're recommending, to achieve some economies and some efficiencies, and to restructure services. And right now, we're working very closely with your A.G.E. because of the fact that's where, uh, it had, you know, it's the Efficiency Policy Committee. And we're using that as a vehicle right now to work with the various departments in the city to encourage that restructuring. But I want to tell you right now, although I've said it, and you've heard me say it, every time I've had a financial status report, and every time I presented a budget to your council, I've talked about the restructuring and streamlining and economies and so on. Very few have participated. That has to stop. We have to order these folks that the only way we're going to close, and also in our financial status report, we have the five-year forecast, the only way we're going to close the one-eighty-six I've identified, or the two-thirty-four your C.L.A. has identified, is if we, we change how we do business. We must do that, we must order folks to do that, send them back unless they're on, and tell them to bring us some ideas. Now, I'll leave my, my, uh, I'll end my comments and ask if you have any questions regarding either the, uh, Budget Reduction Memo or our first financial status report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fujioka. And we hear from Mr. Deaton, and then we'll hear from councilmembers.
I'd just like to summarize the, you have three issues that are kind of being discussed. One is this year. Uh, there is before you, uh, the state in their budget deliberations, cut V.L.F. by not doing the backfill to the neighborhood of fifty million dollars. We have one-time cuts in order to make up for that one-time loss. The additional problem with this year that was not discussed until just recently is that roughly forty million dollars a year were over-expending, expending. This is not a one-time problem, this is a continuing problem. We don't, budget, the departments are overspending at the rate of forty million dollars a year. Two, our own budget in the future. Bill has, has a number of roughly a hundred-and-seventy-five, a hundred-and-eighty million dollars. I have one of two-hundred-and-forty million dollars of, uh, revenues being less than expenditures in the long term and expanding over the next five years. If you look at Bill's numbers on salaries, a hundred-and-fifty million dollars is the amount of salaries we spend for the Department of Recreation and Parks and libraries together. A hundred-and-fifty million dollars is an enormous number. We have to downsize, we have to either reduce expenditures, there's only two ways to solve a budget problem. One is to increase revenue, and the second is to decrease expenditures. I believe we'll have, before this is over, we will have to do both. The third issue is that the state is considerably out of balance. There's someplace between ten and twenty-five billion dollars, depending on what assumptions and what lawsuits they win or they lose, and whether or not the car tax, in addition to the, the changes they made this year, if they eliminate the increases in the car tax, it, it could approach twenty-five billion dollars. That could reflect another hundred-and-seventy-five to two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars for the City of Los Angeles, which is yet another library system and wrecking park system. So, we have, uh, to summarize, a forty million dollar problem this year that we have to address. Secondly, we have a hundred-and-seventy-five to two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollar problem in the future of our own to solve, and then we have the potential of an equal amount of money coming as a result of state action, depending on how they do the car tax. And, just because the car tax goes, doesn't mean the state won't look to local government for other problem, solving their problem as well. But we're talking, so, forty, two-hundred, two-hundred summary. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deaton. Um, Ms. Misakowski.
Sometimes it sounds like you need the calculator around here. Um, members, I, I'm just going to reiterate, it's, it's really disappointing, and it's not disappointing by what we've done. We know we went through... We know we went through a little disagreement last year as we started our budget, but this point in time, there is no disagreement. And what's disappointing is we, we did good. We restricted, we constrained, we found new revenue, we balanced and didn't overspend, at least as we projected. What happened? $47 million off the bat, lost from Sacramento in their fix this year. That's 47 million that we adjusted for, and this report says adjust for, take 1% across departments, manage that. Okay. After having done that, we find that our departments are spending $50 million more than we budgeted for, and that's not having put all the extra stuff in. That we have to account for. That's what Mr. Fujioka's saying. 10 million we'll get back from airport reimbursement, but there's 40 million on just the spending now with constraint, with hiring freeze, 40 million more than we budgeted. Mr. Fujioka is recommending, and the Budget Committee is recommending, we can adjust for that. So we adjusted for 47 million. We're going to adjust for 40 million. Where does that leave us? That leaves us, starting next year, no extra money, and knowing that we're somewhere about 200 million, I'm going to say in the whole, next year, as we start, just with as-is expenditures, as-is salaries, as-is employees, as-years' expectation, and no resources that we can turn to because we've scraped the barrel on those resources. That's reality. Potential reality is if the state does any more damage on the VLF, on anything else, I mean, it's almost freefall at that point. I, you know, it's 200 that we know we have, maybe plus an additional 200 out of sync. It's really, really, really difficult times. It's why the CLA and CAO are saying, and Budget Committee is recommending, as we do anything new, we've got to show where the revenue comes from. The revenue comes, if we adopt a new policy, from either a real new revenue stream or for trade-off. We cut a project, we cut a program, we do this because we think this one's a higher priority. Some, what is putting us out of balance? Some good things, some things we said we need to do. Some things like TMDL, regional water quality. This council said, "We're going to do those good things. We have to, it's mandated, we shall." Those are going to cost, we know they're going to cost, and those start putting us a little out. There's other good things, there's other programs, we are all taking our policy directive to say it's a good thing, but it's going to cost us. It, it's going to be very, very difficult, what's, the hard reality for, I think, us as elected officials, for clearly our department members and heads, and the general public, is to recognize that there's, we're not going to go back to what it used to be like. We're not going to be able to return, as our general manager is saying, "Let us have our positions back, let us have more to do more things." That's not going to be the reality. The reality is going to be complete restructuring. I made a point yesterday, it was, and it wasn't meant to be funny, but we did get one department that talked about restructuring or reorganizing. It was Los Angeles Police Department, but their reorganizing was going to cost more. We can't do it that way. Restructuring, reorganize is consolidate, do more with less, look at efficiencies, look at this program Mr. Fujioka's coming in with, and Mr. Smith said yesterday, "We can't wait to start that. We're going to start it in Budget and Finance as part of this report right now, starting to look at hard choices." Because it is going to be hard choices for us, for our city employees, and for the public. And one of the things that I think we also added yesterday when asking the CAO to go and talk to our employee labor groups, is to start working with us. Try to figure out, this is reality, this is what we're forecasting five years down the line. In fact, at the end of the five years, we talked about reality being 500 million out of sync, five years out. We need to do joint labor management practices, best practices with our employees, helping us achieve those goals. So we are a lean, streamlined, city-providing services agency that can still provide the best for our citizens, adopt those policies, and get things done that maintain the quality of life and the quality of services that we need to as a city. It's going to be hard, it's going to be a mantra we are going to read here again and again and again, but it's, it's reality, and this one, there's no one saying, "Don't worry, it's not going to be that way, it's going to be better." Everyone recognizes this is reality.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zikowsky. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I'm going to try not to be too repetitive of what's been said already by Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Zikowsky, but I do want to take a step back and paint a little bit of a bigger picture for us. I mean, I think, I know that each and every one of us as council members, every elected official in the City of Los Angeles, works hard, is committed to doing our best, our best to providing the resources and services to each and every community in the City of Los Angeles, because that's what, not only what we want, but that's what they deserve. But these are difficult economic times, and during tough economic times, you are asked to do more with less. During difficult economic times, there are things that we would like to do, but simply cannot do. It's difficult times that require tough decisions, it's difficult times that force us into a position of having to make tough choices, and it's difficult times that sometimes calls for leadership, because doing the right thing by the city, doing the right thing by the city's pocketbook and the taxpayers' money is not always the easiest thing to do. And I want to shed light on that because I think, not only in their meeting yesterday, but the Budget and Finance Committee, their members and Budget Chair Parks have done a good job of doing what they've had to do as we face the realities of this budget. You know, credit goes to the council, in my opinion, for having taken the initial steps after 9/11, having weathered a sluggish economy, having weathered cut after cut after cut from the state to keep us in a relatively speaking decent financial position in the City of Los Angeles. We're nowhere near as bad as the school district, as the county, as the state, as cities across the country, but it doesn't mean that we're out of the woods yet. And I think anybody who circles back to the budget conversations we were having back in May and June, we know that we want to provide for our communities, we know that we want to give the department, the police department, the resources they need to fight crime and meet all the other priorities of the city, but we, we've had to be responsible with our budget, and that included maximizing a reserve fund, which we have had to tap to absorb the cuts and the shortfalls, and unfortunately, on behalf of departments, overspending. The CLA and the CAO have run us through the numbers, they're not small. It's a significant number we're looking at, the $47 million short from the state, the $50 million in overspending, and we're not even four months into this fiscal year. This is only compounding the projected deficit that we were foreseeing for the next fiscal year, which we'll be talking about in a few months. The financial security and the future of this city is part of our responsibility as well. It's not just about getting through this month or getting through this fiscal year, it's about what kind of fiscal shape are we leaving the city in for the next generation of members of the council, for the next generation of Angelenos. Let us learn both from Sacramento, let's learn from their mistakes and not repeat them, that's why they're in the situation that they're in. Let's also learn from Washington. For better or for worse, we can't approve of deficit spending. The moves going on in Washington that are going to lead future generations of Americans in indebtedness for the foreseeable future is not the way we want to manage this city. So it makes our here and now decisions that much tougher, but I think it makes us that much more responsible. So again, I applaud the decision and direction of the council in the past, I applaud and thank the Budget Committee for doing the tough, tough work that it requires to keep us on a strict and disciplined fiscal course, and I want to ask each and every one of you for your continued focus and discipline as we introduce motions, as we like to sponsor new initiatives and new projects, citywide and for our district, to do so while keeping in mind the city's pocketbook and the fiscal state and health of the city now and into the future. And just one quick--
I can ask you to conclude, Mr. Padilla.
Yeah, I'll wrap up. One quick, specific comment, because it was introduced as part of, you know, the concerns as we look forward, the firefighter's MOU. It's not just the firefighter's MOU, all the MOUs that are on the table to be negotiated, and all the MOUs that have already been adopted, I think all the MOUs have to be in place. I just want to make sure we're not outlining or focusing too much on just the firefighter.
We should not single out the firefighter MOU. What we've been asked to do is to look at all MOUs, but regardless of the status, but you're right, it would be unfair to single out one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Just to run down the speaker queues so folks know where they are, it's Weiss, Smith, Reyes, Zine, Gruel, and Han. Mr. Weiss.
I, I just want to clarify, what, what you're talking about this morning, Mr. Fujioka, is these are cuts that are necessitated by the state budget alleged resolution from last summer?
The $47 million, there are two memos and two agenda items, the $47 million is in direct response to the state cut. It has to do with the delay, and also has to do a loss, the delay in the VLF change, and also has to do with the loss in some COPS grant money, more, the state COPS grant money. Now, this is the consequence of the prior, I shouldn't say prior yet, the current administration, soon to be prior administration's actions to balance the budget, but what Ron was saying, and what needs to be emphasized, is that they lost a lawsuit for their pension bonds, they're in court on a lawsuit for their debt bonds, and they still have at least an $8 million problem, so it could very quick, a billion-dollar problem, quickly become an eight. But this is in response to what we know right now, but we anticipate some additional problems.
I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, I mean, are we just going to be victimized every couple months by decisions that they make up there? Are we just, are we just, are we basically just victims here, just waiting for another blow, another blow, another blow? I mean, is that, is that, is that, is that what we're supposed to do? Every month, every couple months, we get hit, and then we cut more, we get hit, and then we cut more?
I hesitate to say that the only time we're safe is when they're not in session, but it's pretty close. I mean, you, you have a state that is facing $8 billion to $12 billion, assuming that the borrowing goes through and they don't reduce the vehicle license fee. If both of those, all those things go south, it's someplace in the neighborhood of $25 billion. Depending on how the, the car tax is taken care of, if there's a backfill, then it doesn't affect us directly at the get-go, but when they get to the backfield, they could backfill the vehicle license and cut the sales tax. I mean, one is not, they're, or they may do something to property tax. There's any number of things that, that are, we're exposed to, and given the magnitude of their problem, and their propensity to allow us to help them solve it, we're in danger.
Tell, tell me what you mean by their propensity to allow us to help them solve it. What do you mean by that?
What I mean is, in my career, the City of Los Angeles initiated the cigarette tax. Then the state took over the cigarette tax, and then they took half the cigarette tax away from us, and then they took all the cigarette tax away from us. There has been, there is a tax that we had on savings and loans, they preempted us on that, and they kept the money. In the vehicle license fee, they promised that we would be backfilled, that's the $47 million that we have right now. There is, I could give you a list of actions that have been taken over the last 25 years in which the, the trend is, is obviously for them to take from us as opposed to vice versa. And the real, one last thing, the thing that is quite frankly annoying about this whole is largely, they, the state got into this problem when their revenues went up dramatically. One-time capital gains on the dot-com explosion, et cetera, those monies went away. If they had shared in some fashion those revenues with us, so we would have had the pleasure in those same years to, to counteract the pain that we have today, that would have been a more reasonable approach.
Well, you know, one thing that would be, there, there are an awful, Mr. Deaton, there are an awful lot of proposals now that I read about in the newspaper and on the web to allegedly shake things up and clean house in Sacramento. I just, in fact, I was just looking on the Sacramento Bee's website, and evidently there's a proposal that's being considered by the new governor for Eli Brode to head a commission to make tough decisions. I'll believe that commission when I see it appointed. But can you, as part of your work, can you give us basically a memorandum that explains what's going on in Sacramento and what, what we're likely to see, just sort of a little timeline, so we can look out a couple months ahead?
I can, I can give you our best, I mean, I'm, with all, with all due respect, I don't think anybody knows what's going on in Sacramento right now, but there are certain timelines and things that are being discussed and is likely to happen in the next three to six months.
I have Rex Orloff right now, who handles, excuse me, who handles our revenue. He's preparing a document that will show the money taken by the state from local cities, particularly our city, over the past 10 to 15 years. We're also going to identify the revenue that by, through state legislative action, is the most vulnerable, what they could take from us by just, you know, getting, getting a sufficient number of votes. But like Ron said, I know something will happen, Ron knows something will happen, it's a given, there will be additional state impact. How much is speculative, but something will happen.
If you could, if you could do that in combination with, with Mr. Deaton, and if you could also lay out for us just in general, sort of the broad outlines of the different policy options that have been discussed, that are under consideration, because what we need here clearly is state leadership on this issue, because we're just, I mean, we're the tail wagging the dog here, and, and, for example, I look, I look at the summary of proposed reductions that Mr. Fujioka prepared, and it says, "Defer the resurfacing of 84 miles of streets." That's one of the actions that's before us today, right?
Right.
Well, memo to Sacramento, 84 miles of unfix, unpaved Los Angeles streets, that'll ruin the axle on a Hummer. It will, sooner rather than later, and so we need some statewide leadership so that, because the state, the reality is, state government is doing this to the City of Los Angeles, and we need some state leadership to put a stop to it.
The information we passed out, and I referenced earlier, was our first of many attempts, but our first attempt to start providing information to our council and the mayor's office on the impacts, so we can get the word out on the street, is everyone thinks, "Oh, there's no impact, we can just absorb it."
One, just, as is, this year is $50 million of state cut, $50 million of our overexpenditure. We have 175 to 225 overexpenditure that is our problem that we created, and we have the potential of 175 to 225 million dollar problem that they could create. So we have to be cognizant of the fact that they could create a bigger problem for us, but if they were to walk away and not touch us, we still have a substantial budget problem in the out years with or without the state. It can only, the state can only make a very bad problem considerably worse.
I, I agree with that, and thank you for, for making that point.
And please, on that note, if you look at a five-year forecast, and there's one by both, has information from my office and--
Did he just say the forecast word?
Yes, I used the forecast word. But look at the principal drivers. One of the principal drivers that pushes that my 186 or Ron's 234 is approximately $80 million in additional contributions to our fire and police pension and our civilian retirement programs. That's a consequence of the market losing value. That's nothing we did, it's not, we didn't change our structure or anything. That's the, the investment portfolio for those two funds have lost value, and so that's one of the big drivers.
Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Zine, Ms. Gruel, Ms. Han, Mr. Villarosa, and Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend, first of all, Mr. Parks for doing an excellent job of summarizing what happened in Budget Committee yesterday. He really did a good job of letting everybody know how severe this problem really is and the consternation we began to feel yesterday as we went through this problem, and particularly what Cindy said about how we found some of those patches, we've done what we can, but, you know, there's no more tricks left to pull, I don't think. I imagine Ron and Bill have one little, one little one somewhere left, because I know those guys, but for the most part, the big patches have been used, we're out of Band-Aids, folks. And the most important thing is, is this, this chart that Mr. Parks passed out. If you look at this, this is not a problem this year, this is not just a problem last year, and for-- year, and for six months, and in the next year, it is a five-year problem. It is a problem of structure, of how we've run this government for too long. We can worry about what happened in Sacramento, but that's been going on for decades, since Prop 13, when local governments got 32.5% of all local, of all taxes collected in California went to local governments, it's down to 19 today. That wasn't a Republican administration, it wasn't a Democrat, it was Sacramento over 25 years doing this to local government. Let's not get involved in victimology and concern about blaming them, let's just face the facts, we got a problem, it is a long-term problem, it can't be fixed with patches anymore, we've reached the bottom of the barrel. We have to look at this government in totality. Everything has to be considered right now. We cannot just concern ourselves with making tweaks, we have to look at every single department of this city and say, do we really need to do that anymore? Is that important for us now? There are things that, that are very popular in this city, that we do because we choose to do them, because they are good, because they are the right thing to do. Question is, can we afford to do them anymore? And that's what we have to address to ourselves in the next year. We have to structurally fix this city for the next five years, and that will not be done by moving money and transferring little things around, it's going to be looking at every single department, and what services they provide, and can we afford to do them anymore? And going back to what our core responsibility is as a city, and to provide those maximum services we can within those core responsibilities, as police, fire, sanitation, those things we have to do, and everything else has to be discussed. And as a member of that committee, I can tell you, that is going to be my focal point for the next year, is look at every single operation of this city, turn it upside down, see if we can make it more efficient, do a better job of delivering the services of what we have, and those things that really cannot be afforded anymore, I'm going to be coming to you, I'm going to come to this committee, I'll be coming to this council and saying, it's time to take a look at this and consider whether we can afford to do it anymore. That's the fiscal discipline we have to impose upon ourselves, because Sacramento didn't do it when they saw the road signs 18 months ago, they blew right through them. Their revenue sources were going down, their expenses were going up, they reached that point when every business hits that point, they make major changes, they didn't stop when they saw those road signs, they kept going. We're at the road signs, folks, and it's time for us to tighten the belt and do the very ugly things we want to do. And I can tell you, I came down here three months ago with a long list of things I want to accomplish, and a lot of those are on the back burner already, and I'm not happy about that. But that's the reality of the city that we're in today, the economy we're in, and it's time to just do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Reyes.
I appreciate my colleagues' statements in relation to how you look at the whole systems and structures. If you look at this chart, we talk about general fund revenues, we have a pie here that has to grow. We can talk about cutbacks, we also need to talk about how do we structurally grow this pie? And we look at what tools are before us. So it's not only understanding the force of the market, it's understanding the forces that come with supply and demand. Now, one tool we have before us is a tool that we call planning police powers, and how we deal with markets and create revenue, revenue basis. Now, one significant piece of this pie is property taxes. No, I'm not saying we increase property taxes, what I'm saying is that we look at what tools we have before us to enhance that piece of the pie. Now, here I have a chart, building permits issued for new multifamily housing units. From 2002 to 2003, we have an incredible growth of new residential units caused by what's called adaptive reuse. Some of us took the time to look at our land use patterns, our housing zones, our commercial zones, and some of us were able to advance a different layer of revenue based on our ability to transfer underused property, abandoned property into residential property. And that created a section here that never existed before in a one-year period. These are close to 4,000 new units caused by adaptive reuse. And you can see the change occurred from 2000, 2002, this color, this bar increased dramatically. Colleagues, what I'm saying to you is that we, as a council, working with the mayor's office, are at a good position to say, how do we reassess our ability to use our planning police powers and actually tap into that market that's significantly off balance? There's a supply and demand issue here. In the past six to seven years, we have fallen behind. We should have been generating 6,000 to 7,000 housing units to keep up with the demand that we haven't. We're 66,000 units behind. At this point, our hundred-dollar transfer, as great as it is when it comes to the need of developing new units and housing, requires that we take that step, and I keep saying this in different ways. How do we reassess our land use patterns, our property development growth, our transit stations, to increase that piece of the pie that can grow, that generates revenues for the city? We have that ability. Adaptive reuse was one tool. Right now, we're looking at this issue of inclusionary zoning, which I know is a very emotional and touchy issue, but something we need to look at to see where does this revenue base come from? We have three, four families living in one household in whole sections of our city, when they could be buying into housing that meets their demand. But did we create the zoning, and did we establish that zoning pattern? So this is not going to happen overnight, this falls along that four, five-year trend. This goes back to what I was saying when I started this statement. Let's look at the structure of how we develop this pie, just reassess how we're dedicating our resources and increase that piece that truly has the ability to generate revenue for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Deaton, I guess you're going to answer the questions now. I have a question that continually comes to Personnel Committee, is that we have a hard hiring freeze, or a hiring freeze, and continuously departments are requesting personnel, for whatever purpose, whatever reason. It goes to the mayor's office, goes through the CIO's office with recommendations for approval. And I think if you start counting the people that we brought back or filled positions, there's a great number of them. Which troubles me that we get to this point where we have this financial crisis, looming and continuing saga, yet we still see in the committee that I chair requests for positions. And I'm not talking about reorganizations of departments, we've talked about consolidation of departments, we have moved forward on that as a cost-saving measure. And we talk about the budget problem, yet the business goes on as usual for the most part, where departments are continuing to get additional personnel. How do we respond to that? How do we say it's a hard hiring freeze, and we have to do with what we have and not continue to fill whatever department it is?
Well, I think we have put before you a hiring freeze policy that allows for, like the maintenance of key vehicles and the filling of key positions in the city while we're looking at reducing the expenditures, the high-level positions, and for the most part, the positions that we would look at to reduce, we're, we're not going to, we're recommending the council say they're frozen and they're not going to be unfrozen. And this isn't the first time we've faced this, we've discussed, we've had a hiring freeze for a long time, and continuously, budget and finance and personnel, I continually get these requests, they continually come through.
I need to put this in context somewhat. We've had, of those, of the total number of requests who have gone forward, or based on total, total number of vacancies, there are 1,365, this is as of the, in the vaga's beginning of September, some of our information, you have to understand, is retrospective. But there's 100, there's 1,365 that were, that are vacant, that have not been requested by the departments, because we've told them we will not approve those requests. We've denied 98, 48 have gone forward, there are another 508 sitting in my office right now that we're not, we're not going to send forward, pending your consideration of our new hiring freeze process. It's not as if, I know you've seen some, your agenda has a number of them, your committee agenda, subsequently this council, I understand that, but they are those that we feel are most critical to continue with the core services. We're going to come to you, and we were asked to look at a modified process for our police department, and there's a compelling argument that if we don't approve the clerical positions, for example, the clerical positions, then you have other professional or even sworn staff performing that function, that's a misuse of that resource. We have positions that we sent forward that have revenue collection activities, or we feel are critical positions. When it comes to the high-level management positions, they're not leaving our office, but we are taking a very close look at them. Unfortunately, the ones you see, I know there's the assumption that, oh my God, there's a number coming through the process, but yet, in relation to what's being denied, it's a relatively small number.
But if we count the numbers that have come through the mayor's office, to your office, to the Personnel Committee, to Budget and Finance, I think you'll find a large number that have been approved, since we've had a hiring freeze, a soft hiring freeze, a hard hiring freeze, hiring freeze in general. That's my concern, is that if we say we're not going to do this, and then we turn around and we continue to do it.
Well, you can never have a hard, absolute hard, well, maybe you can at the very end, when-
But when you start to lay people off, then what do you do at that point?
I understand. But our departments, our almost 38, 39 departments, they cannot control who retires.
Right.
And at times, when that person leaves, or a person who's picked up by a proprietary department or another department that has it on freeze, that vacant position may perform a highly critical function. And so we look at the criticality of that, of that position as one of the factors determining whether or not we should grant the un-freeze. And as of today, 48 have been approved. That's a small number, given the overall number of vacancies we have here in the city.
What we have to do is to gauge our hiring freeze to our problem, and we need, we have some time to bring the expenditures down to a level that we can meet these five-year difficulties. Even in, in 1978, when Prop 13 passed, there was talk in the city of laying off 5,000 people through a variety of things, state aid, et cetera, we didn't lay anybody off, and we approved some hiring freezes to lift the hiring freeze. We put a hard hiring freeze on, and every, every, every position came through council. But that didn't mean that every position was, remained frozen. We filled police officer positions, we filled refuse, there are things, some core functions that you have to do, and it's a difficult, tedious process, and it's not one that, it's a painful process to have a single through the process and look at each one of them. But I think we're, we're tightening down, we need to tighten down a little more, and we need to look at these expenditures and bring them in line, but I think that we're, we're getting there. And we may, we may need more discipline as, as this year goes on in order to get ready for next year. And it's unsettling that we're spending more money this year than we have. I mean, we thought, you know, a couple, three months ago, that we were, that wasn't the case for this fiscal year, but it is.
And the largest cost is personnel.
Absolutely. And people are what, you know, you can, it's, you know, something between 80 and 90% of our budget. And, but on the other hand, it is, when you call 911-
I understand the police, but there were a number of departments that we talked about consolidating. There's the issue about the waiver of fees for special events, which is a cost-saving situation. We haven't seen those come forward, which may play into this. The fact of consolidating departments at the top management to have the workers, we're still waiting, and that was discussed-
That report's coming back, will come back in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, the other issue, since we're talking about money, the other issue was the special events, which we're supposed to analyze and figure out a policy, which all feeds into this same situation of how much money, as we need the housing trust fund, we bleed the housing trust fund, and then we don't have that. And it comes to the point where you can't draw from here to PayPal anymore, and I think we're-
We're there.
The documents, we're there. There's no more money in the pocket to switch to the other pocket. Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Bill Fujioka and I have been working very closely together to examine some of the inefficiencies and waste throughout our city government, along with my colleagues on the HE Committee, Councilmember Han and Councilmember Weiss. And I have to take this opportunity to thank and congratulate Bill with his city improvement teams, which have been coming up with some excellent ideas on efficiencies we can implement in the city of Los Angeles. And they run from $500,000 savings to over a million or two, which we think all pieced together are going to have an impact. But I, I can't remember which of my colleagues on the other side was talking about it, maybe it was you, Greg, that we have to look at the big picture. We have done a lot of, we have done a lot of piecemeal actions, we have in personnel as a new member of the Personnel Committee, when you see all of these hiring freezes coming forward, trying to fit it in, in the big picture, and what our priorities are. And I think the policy that we don't have before us today on hiring freeze, but went before Personnel Committee and the Budget and Finance yesterday, is a very good first start, because I think we're also wasting a lot of time and energy having each of these go through all that process. I don't know if we eventually figured out how much it costs us for each one of those. But as mentioned, we have been talking about consolidating some of the human services departments, we have been talking about the ambulance collection and how we can improve on that. We have a $17 million collection that we have not been able to get back for the city of Los Angeles, we're looking at the 3-1-1 system. We're looking at a variety of ways in which we can be able to provide additional funds. I think, as Mr. Weiss stated as well, the state, we are kind of in limbo on the state level, we depend upon them for funds, and we have to do a better job of educating them and the public about the impact their decisions have here on local government, in particular in our police and fire and basic city services. So we're going to look at that streamlining, the ability for us to reform, so we can demonstrate to our, our public that it is so critical that if we're going to ask them, for example, if we, as we are waiting to hear back on the police bond issue in several weeks, whether or not, we have also done our part to make the city better and to run more efficiently. So I think that this is sobering news today, not unexpected in some ways, but reminds us that as elected officials, we have to make those tough choices very often to say, this is all the money we have, this is what we're going to be able to do, and to be a good spokesperson and messenger to our constituents about the problems that we're facing. And I also want to compliment Bernard Parks and his leadership on the Budget Committee, because he has rolled up his sleeves and very much familiar now with all of the intricacies of our city budget. But we are going to have to make some tough decisions, this is just the beginning of the process, at least identifying where the problem is. So look forward to the HE Committee playing a critical role in providing some of that leadership on streamlining and efficiencies that we can work together.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Speaking of a hiring freeze, I think we could save some money in this building if we turned up the air conditioning. Let's, let's start with that freeze. I don't know how you're sitting out there as cold as I am, but it never-
That's an unfreeze.
Yeah, it never seems like the right time of the year to be having air conditioning. But, you know, again, I, this is certainly sobering news this morning, and I certainly am relating to the comments that Councilwoman Missakowski made in the beginning, that basically this is none of our doing, that we're in this situation, and clearly we have every year asked our departments to cut back, asked to streamline, we've been making some tough choices, so it's very disappointing to find us in this situation. And it does seem like we're at the time when, as you said, the barrel has been scraped, we are going to be now asking departments to do more. But I, you know, want to go on record today saying that, and I think some of my colleagues might disagree with me on this, but I think it's time, as Hal Burton used to try to get us to do, which is to have a zero-based budget. We decide what is the priority, we fund that, and then we start making the tough choices. And for me, I still believe that I don't want to ask the police department, and I don't want to ask our firefighters to do more with less. I think that is the priority in the, in the city, is public safety. And it's not just my priority, I hear from my constituents on a daily basis, I've done surveys in the 15th Council District, and it consistently comes back, and I give them a list of priorities, parks, schools, streets, trees, programs, cultural affairs, I give them a number of priorities, consistently it comes back, the number one priority from Watts to San Pedro is public safety. They want our streets safer, they don't really, are not as interested in building new libraries if they're not going to- They don't really, are not as interested in building new libraries if they're not going to be safe. They're not really interested in, you know, redeveloping areas if it's not going to be safe. If they don't have the paramedics to depend on, if they don't have the police officers to depend on. We can talk about open space and parks and housing, all these things are too important. But in, again, in my district, from Watts to Wilmington to San Pedro, they consistently come back and say what they really want is for their children to be safe. What they really want is their kids to be able to walk to the library and not feel like they're going to be in line, in the line of gunfire. We've got a serious gang problem in this, in this city, and until we really curb that, until we really make sure people are safe sitting at bus stops, walking home from school, I don't know what, I don't know what other program in the city means anything if we can't feel safe with our firefighters and our police officers. So, I'm ready to make tough choices, but I would love to see the City Council go on record as saying our priority is the safety of our residents. Our priority is their, their health and safety, and then start cutting and making the tough choices. I think that's what we have to finally do. I would like for this day to go forward and say, we will have a zero-based budgeting policy. We will decide what is the priority, and we will not cut that. And I, I do not want to go back to public safety departments and ask them to do any more with any less, and I think we will have the support of our residents and our constituents on this issue. I'm worried about the bonds that the people have already passed. I'm worried about building new libraries and then not having the staff to, to staff them. I think we're in a very tough situation here. But again, if you'll go out and ask your residents, they want to feel safe. I was in Watts this morning, helping to build a home for Happy Happy Humanity, but we've got a family that's never been able to have homeownership before that will now own a home, and they will begin to succeed in their life. But they want their kids to be safe. They want their kids to not be able to be plagued by gang violence. So, when I hear from the mothers, say, please help us keep our kids out of gangs, please help us keep our kids safe, that's where I'm not going to budge. I will not cut public safety, and I hope we can all agree that would be the, the priority in the city of Los Angeles.
Can I make a quick comment with respect to restructuring and the streamlining and so on, and as it impacts public safety? The comments of streamlining or restructuring doesn't mean just cut, but what we're encouraging in, see, through the hiring freeze process, is where you have a police officer doing a job that us are doing can do, that should happen, that may result in, in an additional expenditure, actually, that police officer can go on the field, which would help us with respect to some of our hiring goals. But where we have in a department, a management analyst doing a job that a senior clerk could do, through a reallocation process, we can then save some money. But what I, what I am advocating is that no department is exempt from our review to look at how we can restructure. How do we get more officers out on patrol? That's what we should be focusing on. How can we look at the fire department to achieve some efficiencies to, to enhance our ability to, to fully implement the emergency medical service program we have? Where in the second year of a five-year program to get an ambulance in every single facility and a paramedic resource on every single apparatus, that should be one of our priorities, where we put the money in. I totally agree with you.
Thank you, Mr. Fujioka. Councilmember Vieira Costa.
Yes, Madam President, members, I want to thank Councilmember Misakowski for leading up this very important discussion about our finances, about our priorities, about what we do as a city to be fiscal conservatives of our, and shepherd our resources in a way that provides a maximum of services to the people of this city. You know, Sacramento and the VLF has, you know, has been mentioned by the CAO and the CLA has resulted in fifty million dollars in cuts. There's a potential that this year, that that could go to a hundred and five million dollars. We've heard today that if the VLF was repealed, next year it would be two hundred and thirty-two million dollars. That is just for the VLF, not to mention what other cuts could occur that could impact this city, and given some of the options that we've heard from the governor-elect, and the failure of the legislature to agree to revenue generators, it's clear that it's not hyperbolic to say that it's not only two hundred and thirty-two million potentially, it could be well beyond that. I stand with Councilmember Hahn. Three years ago, I said, throughout the city, that we need to look at zero-based budgeting. The idea that a department just has a budget and then adds to it every year without looking at whether, what, what services are being provided, how we can maximize those services is untenable. I think we need to engage in a performance and a financial audit of every single department, because we know that many of our departments could work more efficiently. I think we've got to take some blame, everybody. We, you know, fifty million of this deficit are over expenditures on the part of our department. We were here. I was here for the last three months, so I'm, you know, complicit. All of us who have been here for some time are complicit as well, and we need to do something to rectify that. In addition to that, while I agree with Councilmember Smith with respect to hiring freezes and Councilmember Zine, we're working together on our committee in that regard. One of the things I've said is, you know, when you have a one percent cut and, and you put everybody in a blanket cut, what you don't do is take into account that some of these positions are revenue generators. Why would we be cutting, you know, positions that are bringing money into the city? That's nonsensical. We should be looking at a freeze that takes into account that some, some positions create revenue, some positions, as you said, Mr. CAO, are maximizing efficiencies. And finally, let me just say, the Councilmember Reyes hit it on the hit. Everyone, it's not just about cuts, it's not just about tightening our belt. We're going to have to do that to give people the confidence and the understanding that we're doing everything possible to tighten our budget and to maximize our services, but we're also going to have to look at revenue generators. We're going to have to look at what we can do to protect the public safety, as Ms. Hahn said, to protect fire and safety, but also sanitation and libraries and children and families, youth services, and all the very important services that comprise the safety of this city.
Mr. Garcia. Thank you, Mr. President, and I think most things have been said by everybody today that need to be covered. Let me try to add a couple of things, despite Mr. Cardenas asking me to say it again, but Winston Churchill quote, most everything's been said, but it hasn't been said by everybody. There's a couple of things that I wanted, I want to make a motion first, and I know I've discussed this with Mr. Fujioka, so this doesn't surprise anybody to take out the three million dollar removal from the housing trust fund until we can resolve some issues. There's about a four million dollar balance in the housing trust fund right now, colleagues as we speak. As many of you will recall, we've done an extraordinary job here of leveraging money here in the city for housing, garnering twenty-five percent of the first round of Prop 46 money at the state level, even though we only have ten percent of the state population. And those projects that are right now in the process for January round, we don't want to undercut them, so we're going to look at that and have a report back in two weeks to the Housing Community Economic Development Committee on that. There's no objection. Secondly, I want to praise both CAO and the CLA for their work again. You know, it's easy for us to sit here and say that we're doing a good job, and I want to address a couple of things that were raised, because I think we get criticized this city a lot, sometimes in editorials, that don't spend a lot of time here in the city seeing how things work. There certainly is a lot of efficiency that we can gain here in the city. I don't think that there is a ton of waste left, and those are very different things. We can also decide, as Mr. Smith said, what are our priorities, and in difficult budget times, we will have to, Mr. Smith, I agree with you, one hundred percent. But that is also different than saying that this is some loaded bureaucracy here where there is just a ton of, of waste to cut out. And that's why I want to praise the city improvement team. I was very supportive during the budget process of them, and I'm really glad that Ms. Grul and Mr. Fujioka are working on that as somebody who's seen that be such an effective tool in the private sector for efficiency. It's time that we had that, and we had it in-house, too. We didn't look at the McKinsey's of the world to do this, but we were able to do that on our own. But the praise that I want to give, it's easy for us to say that we're doing well, but I wanted to mention something that came out in the discussions yesterday, which is the bond companies, who look at Los Angeles, and they have no sentimentalism or nostalgia for the city of Los Angeles. They look with eagle eyes and with fair, unbiased opinions on our fiscal strength, has looked at what we've done collectively over the last couple of years, and we're the fiscally, most fiscally strong, large city in America. We all set the goal of being the safest city in America, but all the goals that we set mean nothing if we can't have fiscal strength. We have been strong here, we have been disciplined here, and I know that we will continue to be here as well. A couple of other things, though, that we have no choice but to spend on, and one is going to be the TMDLs, which I know we talked about yesterday. That is an obligation that we have, and that is coming down the pipeline. But I think one thing, let me just conclude on this, one thing that came out very clearly in this recall election at the state level, is that people are frustrated with government, and it manifests itself in many different ways. They want to know where their money is going, and I think one of the most important things that we have from here is people are against the vehicle license fee when they don't know where it's going. But when they can see in here, that if the state does take the rest of that vehicle license fee, that that means fourteen hundred police officers, or fourteen hundred firefighters and paramedics, that it means all of these cuts directly to our core business, people begin to understand and appreciate where their money goes. And if we can have anything come out of this process, it's that people know that those vehicle license fees or those state fees, which are essentially local dollars, need to stay here locally, if we are to fulfill our obligation, our basic obligation of public safety here. So, keep that in mind, members of the public, we are certainly keeping that in mind, and as we look at moving forward and increasing those efficiencies, we will keep that core mission in mind as well.
Is there a second to Mr. Garcia's motion?
Do you have a second? Mr. Cardenas, seconds. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. One is that I wanted to really focus in on both what Mr. Reyes and Mr. Smith mentioned earlier. One is that, I hope you're warming up a little bit. You know, there really is a difficult task, and I think both the CLA and the CAO have done a good job of bringing this information to us in a timely fashion, but how we begin the process of looking internally at turning upside down the departments. I know that Greg mentioned that very clearly, which is a challenge to not only city council members, but obviously to our department heads. And I don't want to put the cart before the horse here, but the, you know, Greg is looking internally at the things that he can do as a council member in terms of scaling back some of his own vision for things he wanted to do in his district, which is a big, big challenge. Nobody, nobody here wants to do that. But I think Ed did nail it on the head, and one thing that we've got to figure out is, what are we doing as a city to really move the idea of revenue generation to the forefront of our agenda? You know, we've talked about the fact that in the tourism industry, it's a twenty-four billion dollar industry to Los Angeles. What are we doing to make that a thirty-two billion dollar industry in Los Angeles? How are we using the convention center? How are we using visitors and convention bureau? What are we doing to make this the city that people throughout the world want to come to, spend their dollars here in L.A.? What creative alter, what creative forces are there to tap into that? The entertainment industry is a thirty-two billion dollar industry to Los Angeles. We're reeling Jan Perry and Greg Smith and I, working on this new committee to look at what can be done to keep productions here in Los Angeles. We are starting to lose production. Businesses leaving, and we've got to be very prudent in how we're looking at that. Ed's point about the corridors, we, we got to start looking at investing in these economic development initiatives along some of the dilapidated corridors, the aging corridors in L.A., and what can be done to use that as an important leveraging point for new land revenue and, and tax bases with, with those investments. Wendy Grul has introduced a motion today to look at a small business task force, to start looking at our business procurement and contracting procedures. We've got to stop being viewed as the city that's unfriendly to business, as a city that's unfriendly to economic revitalization. And so, I would agree with those points that it can't just be slash and burn, it can't just be cutting. And then I know, members, nobody likes to say it, but I know that it's sometimes we got to look at our own revenue. Our public has been able to enjoy some of the lowest sanitation rates of any city in the region. I know you all dug deep in the last budget process to figure out what we could do with potentially raising some of the revenue. I know the mayor put out a proposal that we, as a body, didn't support, that really looked at some incremental increases there. The other issue of taxes, we hate to talk about that, but Janice Ann nailed it when she said, getting out into the community, talking to our neighborhood councils, talking to our block clubs and our neighborhood watch groups. I know it was clear to me on my campaign, the number-one priority was public safety. People did not want to see a decrease in police officers, they did not want to see a decrease in their firefighters, if anything, they wanted to see an increase in both of those. They wanted to make sure that attrition rates were being slowed down. So, I would just say, one, thank you for bringing this data forward now in terms of giving us a snapshot of your perspectives on what is beginning to, what the potential crisis, beyond the current crisis, could be, and I think we all need to take a look at it. But secondly, I do want to make a challenge to each and every one of us, that several members here, Reyes, Smith, and others have raised a very, very good point about tightening this internal, but also looking at revenue increases that can come from other sources. And I think it's very clear that we're going to have to do a little of both to get these numbers into, into some kind of a congruency.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas. Thank you very much. I do want to compliment the previous council and also compliment the staff, CAO, CLA, for assisting and making sure that we did tighten our belt here in the city of Los Angeles. I remember in these chambers just a few months ago, we had a citywide representative slash countywide representative from San Francisco who commented to me right over there, and he said, wow, I'm impressed that your budget is much healthier than ours. And the reason why is because we actually tightened the belt, or previous council tightened the belt month after month, after month, day after day, after day. But unfortunately, that responsibility didn't end there. It continues to be the case that we need to continue to tighten our belt. We need to continue to recognize that we have some structural difficulties that we have to overcome. We're going to have to think outside the box and do things differently in this city, certainly for the next years and hopefully forever, so we can be much more efficient and much more effective. We won't find ourselves in this position ever again. I also agree with my colleague, Antonio, that we should not cut parking enforcement. Those are revenue generators, and if they're not, please educate us and let us know that they're not. But my assumption is, that's a perfect example of a revenue generator, about keeping law in order, about keeping things in order, but actually an activity that is not a negative on our city budget, but a positive. In addition to that, I'd like to make a plea right now to the governor-elect. Please, Arnold, the campaign is over. Now it's time to educate yourself and to realize that those vehicle license fees are funding our police officers, they're funding our meals on wheels, they're funding our after-school programs, they're funding our firefighters. That is where that money goes. It was very easy to say, and it's always very easy to say in a campaign with sound bites, I will do this, and I will do that. That one action that was talked about in the campaign recently was a four-billion-dollar hit to the state general fund. And the state, I was in the room in Sacramento when we negotiated the reduction of VLF, of the vehicle license fee, and I was in the room when in that same legislation, it was written so that the fees can go down, and in a crisis, the fees can go up legally. And that is exactly what took place. But it's popular to say that they're going to be cut, but just to the city of Los Angeles alone, it could be a loss of a hundred and seventy-five million, it could be a loss of two hundred and thirty-two million, depending on how you slice it. But the bottom line is, the campaign is over. It's now time to govern. It's now time to make the decisions and to be honest with the public about what they want and what they feel they need. If people feel that they need more police officers... Wait a minute, forget about more police officers. If people think that we at least need the number of police officers that we have today, that we at least need the number of firefighters that we have today, that's just two examples. We cannot reduce the vehicle license fee at this time in California. So, with that, we have a lot of work to do, and I look forward to working with our chairman on the Budget Committee, Mr. Parks, and making sure that we do the belt tightening that we will continue to do, day after day, week after week, month after month. Mr. Parks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions that would clarify a couple of issues from yesterday. If Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka would just comment on the U.B. and where it stands in all of these issues as it relates to the shortfall.
Well, the, what's in the U.B. is, or what remains in the U.B. would be additional expenditures for the most part. From my perspective, I would not recommend that you proceed with using, funding anything out of the U.B. until two things... out of the U.B. until two things happen. One is that the $50 million over expenditure for this fiscal year is resolved and we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, if you will, on the 200-plus million dollar deficit that we see for the following year. My anticipation is that that will not happen this year, so I doubt that any future, any money will be of any size will be spent out of the U.B. this fiscal year just because we can't, I don't believe we're going to be able to see the revenues to support that level of expenditure.
I concur with the basic concept, the parameters just laid out by Ron here, but there are some items that we will need that policy discussion that has still continued on the U.B. But in the context of our proposed two new policies, when we have that discussion and if the decision is made to take an item out of the U.B. at the same, and then appropriate the dollars, the money for that appropriation must be identified. And it must be identified in the context of the city's overall problems, how we close the gap for the $40 million we're tracking, how we address the projected deficit as we go forward next year. I mentioned that yesterday in council, I mean, I'm sorry, in committee, that the U.B. item that strikes a very personal chord with me and has to do with DNA analysis, that's one item that I would hope would be the last item we knock fund and that'd be the first item we decide to fund. But I would also ask that you order, you instruct the police department to do whatever's possible to address that need within their billion-dollar budget because it represents $500,000. They should be able to address that need within their billion-dollar budget. They should be taken off that list as a question mark.
Okay. Thank you. One other thing, Mr. Fugioca, could you give us just a brief overview on what the CAO's position is on the DLJ grant and why you came to the conclusion that it's better to be addressed in the 04, 05 budget?
Very quickly, we do reference that in our first financial staff report. We'll be providing a more detailed report to your public safety committee within the next couple of weeks. We're saying today, accept the grant in concept, but do not draw the money this fiscal year, but instead, in the context of the overall budget for fiscal year 04 and 05, as you go through the identification of priorities and you identify the funding sources for those priorities, you then decide if the city can accept either the grant in its entirety or a portion of the grant. But it should be done in the context of the overall budget, not in isolation. So we're saying, don't accept it, accept the grant in principle, do not draw any money now because we have the challenge of coming up with matching funds this year. But as you go through the budget deliberation process for fiscal year 04, 05, you look at priorities, you decide as a whole if we can afford to bring on the new officers.
Okay. Mr. Fugioca, could you give us just a thumbnail on the hiring freeze, what I think is special three?
Very quickly, with respect to the hiring freeze, we have a, if you want to call it a two-tiered process. I won't speak to the first yet. Let me go to the second. We've identified a number of exemptions and this represents a combined hiring freeze for both the mayor and the council, but a number of exemptions for councilman Cardenas. We did not list the parking enforcement specifically, but it is one of the items considered under number F. But we'll be more explicit when we deal with departments and tell them exactly what classifications are exempted for the freeze because it is a revenue generating position. Now, but we have listed on this memo, a number of exemptions that go through the public safety, the revenue generation positions, critical positions that support payroll units throughout the city and a refuse collection and so on. But that's recommendation three. Now, there's another tier is that we're asking departments if they're willing to give up today 3% of their salary account, and that's in addition to the salary savings rate. So for example, if the department has a million dollars salary account and they have a 5% salary savings and then they're willing to give up additional 3, if today, if they give up $80,000, which will take and put in the reserve fund, thus reducing their salary account, they will be exempt from the overall hiring freeze because we'll take that money now. And then that manager can then manage his or her salary account and with that, positions authorities up to the modified level, the reduced level. This will give that department some flexibility, only for non-salary positions. For any management and particularly executive management positions, we will continue to go through the hiring freeze and tell you, it will be extremely, it will be extremely difficult to get any salary or management positions through the hiring freeze process. But departments have said, we're hamstrung, we need flexibility. We said, fine, if you want that flexibility, here's the cost. Carve out money from your salary account, we'll put it in the reserve account and then give you flexibility.
I just, Mr. Parks, I think the committee's recommendations on the hiring freeze, I think are a representation of the priorities that are being discussed around the horseshoe today. You are exempting police patrol positions, police consent decree positions, fire platoon and fire inspectors, security officers, PSRs that respond to 9/11, 9/11, refuse collection positions, positions that keep the maintenance of vehicles going, legally mandated positions, bond finance positions and revenue producing positions. These are the positions that we think are the core functions of the city and they should continue to be filled. We're going to look at the rest of the positions very closely. So this is a, I think, the initial step on the priority setting process by saying who, which positions will continue to be filled and which ones are we going to take a longer look at in order to meet this crisis.
I also neglected to mention, we were asking budget and finance to come up with some language that will modify our list of exemptions to include some critical civilian positions in the police department, which include those assigned to records and identification division, payroll clerks, position, accounting positions at fiscal operations, those who handle vehicle maintenance for the police department and also, of course, those in our jails. And so there's some language that was put together by a CLA in my office that's being presented to modify the current hiring freeze proposal with the intent, and we've also asked the police department to come back and to identify positions currently, or functions currently performed by police officers that can be replaced with civilians, but they go on moving sworn staff out to patrol function. So that's part of this because where we have an officer performing any of these positions, that's wrong. They should be out in patrol.
I want to thank Mr. Fugioca, Mr. Deaton and his staff for the in-depth reporting yesterday and today. I'd like to, before I make my final comments, make a motion that because of all of the concerns and issues dealing with public safety, if you could prepare a report, CAO and CLA, a report to the finance committee that outline the impact on council control departments, if the budget cuts or the needs we have are in the departments other than police and fire. And if we can get that at an upcoming meeting. The other issue I'd like to make a motion on is that when we have those meetings at committee with the department heads about budgets, if we could invite the chair of the committees that are responsible for those departments, it would be helpful. Colleagues, I'd just like in closing to say that I think we've gotten the in-depth analysis of what the conditions are that confront us. The issue is whether we have the will to address it. I think what impressed me today and also several months ago when Mr. Cardenas before he came on the council mentioned to me that many issues that are in the state budget were man-made, there were issues that people ignoring revenue versus need, that using one-time money for multi-year projects, these are the very same issues that are confronting us today. We have the ability to address these issues as a body. We certainly cannot put the entire weight of the budget cuts on the community by cutting their services. We certainly cannot put the entire weight on raising fees. We have to find ways to raise revenues in the city so that we'll have other revenue streams. But we also have to go in, as Mr. Fugioca has said during the last budget process and this time, looking at the efficiencies, whether it's merging departments or functions, or we're looking at what are issues that we should no longer do as a city. But also I think item 21 on special two is important to us also in the fact that as we look at our personnel issues that are the most costly that we have, we need to sit down as a city with existing unions and talk about how they can help us address these issues. And as we directed, Mr. Fugioca, yesterday, that those contracts have reopeners, that we invoke that to start a formal process of evaluating how we can address this on a variety of ways. And so I'm asking that we approve special one, two and three, also that those directions related to the committee yesterday and those that came up today that we address them on our weekly finance committee and we certainly would invite anyone on the council that's interested to start coming to those meetings. Your input is important before we bring these issues to the city, to the full body. So I thank you, Mr. Chair, and hopefully the information that was provided is insightful and will help us at least give a guide as to where we should be going.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and I apologize for being out of the room. Mr. Deaton, I asked Mr. Deaton to come to the center table, please. Mr. Deaton, you read a list of exemptions that were there and I didn't hear the name park ranger or park security officer. So that will include park rangers will be exempt.
That's a protective classes category, which includes the park rangers.
Okay, I just want to make sure the park rangers are part of that.
Yes, they are.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also too want to thank Mr. Parks for bringing this forward. Councilman, this has been an exceptional piece of information or I could say a wheelbarrow of information. And I want to second those two motions that he mentioned. And then members also, just in light of, I think, this information that Mr. Fugioca and Mr. Deaton have given us today, which is quite a lot to grasp and sort of digest, that I'd like to move that we continue item 56 for a week and let us all kind of take all this into consideration and come back and have that closed session item discussed in a week.
Okay. So colleagues, that's a pause from the matter currently before us. Is that something we want to discuss, the motion to continue or take a vote on? Is there any objection? Okay, just that'll be the understanding that members of the council, members of the public that are intended to continue the matter, remaining at the desk in the regular meeting agenda. Anything further on this item, Mr. Ludlow? Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one question, Mr. Fugioca, regarding the security officers. There is a number of security officers who are contract with private security firms. Does that go through a process involving this council or is that done on the outside without council involvement? Because there's a number throughout the city. I was recently at the Davis Center and they had a LAPD security officer and standing next to him, they had a private security officer. Do the departments have the authority, do the jurisdictions do that? Because I never see those requests coming through because they're not still there.
No, if they have a contract approved by this council and the mayor's office, they can hire within, to the limits of the dollar amount in that contract, so they would not come through.
But the adder subtracts on the officers or subject to the contract, not to a hiring freeze or.
There's a certain dollar value involved.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zain. Other members wishing to be heard on this item, I believe everybody's had an opportunity to speak. We do have some specific recommendations from the budget and finance committee before us. We also have an amended motion by Councilmember Garcetti. If there's no further discussion, let's open the roll on amended motion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Now let's open the roll on the matters as amended. I think we can take just one vote for all three items, one, two and three, the special meeting agenda. Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is approved and that is the end of our special meeting agenda. Let's adjourn the special meeting and return now to.
Thank you very much.
And return now to the regular meeting. Thank you, Mr. Fugioca. Madam clerk, item remaining before us, please.
Yes, Mr. President, item, there is a public comment and there's also a closed session item in the regular meeting.
Yeah, we do have item 56 on the desk, request and recommendation by Mr. Ludlow to continue that matter for one week. And unless I see an objection, which I don't, item 56. Thank you. One week from today, Mr. Ludlow, members, is a meeting in the evening in the 13th Council District. So let's give it two weeks, either the next Tuesday or Wednesday afterwards, without objection. And the next order of business is public comment for today and I do not have requests. Members to the public who adjust the council on non-agenda items, public comment for today's meeting is closed. Madam clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special one that has been distributed to the council members and that is moved by Councilmember Parks and seconded by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, city staff has received less than the expected number of proposals at the deadline in the competitive bidding process of Proposition K projects. An extension of the deadline is requested in order to receive additional proposals. However, time is of the essence in receiving and evaluating the proposals due to the restrictive timelines set forth in the Proposition K competitive grant process. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider the substantive motion.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? On the findings? If not on the findings, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, the special one is now before us on the motion itself. Mr. Parks.
I would move that we approve this motion. We had over 200-plus agencies in the city of L.A. and organizations that came to the technical advisory workshop. Only about one-fourth of them submitted applications. I think it's important because of the fact that these funding opportunities only come about every two years, that we give another two weeks to November the 7th for the opportunity to have these very important Prop K projects be accumulated and also evaluated. Realize it will put a strain on Department of Engineering to some degree, but I think the ultimate outcome for the betterment of the city in that projects, particularly the enhancement of park space and a variety of other things that are important to several communities, are given adequate attention and that these issues are addressed in appropriate way. And so I'm asking that the rule 23 for today, that we can address this, give them to November 7th, expand the candidate pool so that we can get the best and the largest number of projects in the system.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll on special one, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Villarosa requests to be excused Friday, October 24th. City business, that meets council policy.
Mr. Villarosa is excused and colleagues, let me announce his attendance for the next week or so may be a little bit unpredictable. He is on jury duty and that wonderful calling system doesn't give us more than 24 hours' notice of when he can join us and when he can't. Next item.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to arrive late Tuesday, November 4th. City business, that meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Gruehl requests to be excused Friday, October 24th to arrive late for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas moves. Excuse granted.
And that clears it as, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Do we have any announcements today? Any announcements? Mr. Labange, you were somewhere in Hollywood today. Can you tell us what that was about?
Always very nice. And Mr. Garcetti, Peter Fonda sends his regards to you. He got over a beautiful star and I remarked how I was on the Vogue Theater in 1969 and saw Easy Rider for the, do you see Easy Rider, Jack? You did? All right, good. Which one were you, Captain America, or were you? Members, I think it's real important we announce today, our Department of Disability is having an event, the Access City Expo. It's at the Los Angeles Convention Center tomorrow, Thursday, October 23rd, from 9:00 to 3:30. And it's really important that all of us become aware of the challenges for those who have physical challenges, and accessibility is so important in all these areas. We just wanted to announce that, so if anyone is in the public that's interested to go to the Los Angeles Convention Center for this workshop between the hours of 9:00 and 3:30, the Los Angeles Convention Center, the Access City Expo, community resource sponsored by our Department of Disability, it's also an employment fair as well. It's very important. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Labange. Are there announcements today? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three announcements. Tomorrow, October 23rd, we have the Child Care Policy Task Force meeting will take place at Crystal Stairs at 650 West Adams Boulevard between 9:00 and noon. Also, on Saturday, October 25th, between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m., the Black Cuisine Expo will host a African-American and Caribbean cuisine food testing that will be held at the U.S. Davidson Center Conference Center at the corner of Jefferson and Figueroa, and that will go on Saturday the 25th, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Also, I'd like to announce that, and thanks to the leadership of Ms. Sikolsky, to expand the community input period for LAX Master Plan, there will be an eighth district meeting Saturday, October 25th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., where the master plan and environmental impact issues will be discussed. And just, it will be at 3980 South Menlo at the Epic Center and Exposition Park. For the public's awareness that any verbal comment or written comment issued during this session will be answered during the environmental report. And so, those comments have to be in by November the 7th of this year. So we're very pleased that in the Eighth District, we're going to have that environmental meeting, and so many of the people in the Eighth District are concerned that because they're not close to the airport, often their concerns may not be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Colleagues, you'll probably remember during the secession debate, Morris Kite, civil rights leader here in Los Angeles, came before us here in council, somebody who, I know many of you knew personally, and who was really a pioneer, not just here locally, but nationally, for equal rights, for gay rights, and really somebody who gave back in so many different ways politically to the city and to his community. This Thursday, tomorrow, at 11 o'clock at the corner of Hollywood Boulevard and McCannan Avenue, we will dedicate Morris Kite Square. We'd like to invite all the members of the public to join us at this historic occasion. Morris is somebody who always gave with all of his heart to his city, and the square is fitting because it's where so many things happened, from the first march here in Los Angeles for equality for everybody, as well as later on in his life, when the first gay and lesbian center, now the largest gay and lesbian organization in the country, was founded just down the street. So we invite people to come out. Johnny Grant, our honorary mayor of Hollywood, will be officiating, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. There's also an important committee meeting this afternoon, joint committee meeting.
Our Development Committee will be meeting with Plum Committee at 2:00 here in chambers.
Other announcements? Members, Ms. Gruel, we have a big event coming up on Saturday.
We do. Alex Padilla and I are going to be at the Day of the Horse at Hanson Dam, the Equestrian Center there. So if you want to see Alex Padilla and Wendy Gruel on a horse, right? Are we going to be on a horse?
You're on.
Okay. Please come Saturday, it's a day of celebration and the lifestyle of our equestrians, and Alex and I are pleased to share that equestrian community there in the East Valley.
Other announcements? If not, we have adjourning motions today? Please rise for adjourning motions. Please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it's with sadness today that I asked that we adjourn. Yesterday, Elliott Smith, the songwriter and musician, died in Silverlake, taking his life in his own hands about noon yesterday. He was born Stephen Paul Smith, and he had battled drug and alcohol addiction throughout his career, but was somebody whose music was incredibly lyric. You probably, many of you know him through his contributions to the film Good Will Hunting, where his music was showcased, and he gained an Academy Award nomination. He was born on August 6th, 1969, in Omaha, Nebraska, grew up near Dallas, and began playing music at the age of nine. As a teenager, he began writing and recording original compositions, and moved to Portland in high school, playing in his first local band there before going to Hampshire College in Amherst, Massachusetts. He gained critical acclaim with his 1997 Either or album and 1998 XO, that in the words of an article from MTV, said that these albums had best demonstrated his ability to delicately deliver poetic emotional lyrics and beautifully dark lush pop melodies. In some ways, he was regarded as a figurehead of the indie rock underground. Roman Candle is another album, which he played all the instruments and recorded on his own four-track. Gus Van Sant famously used his music in Good Will Hunting, and Miss Misery, which was nominated for the best original song, was sung at the Academy Awards in April 1998. He was scheduled to perform at the All Tomorrow's Parties Festival here in Los Angeles on November 9th, but battling demons that chased him throughout much of his life, he took his life yesterday in Silverlake, and we mourn his death. May he rest in peace.
Other tributes? Ms. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it's also with sadness that I asked us to adjourn our meeting this morning in memory of Linum Hamilton, who was one of the striking bus drivers, and he lived in my district in Harbor City, and he was killed in a traffic accident yesterday as his colleagues watched him drive away from the pick-up line. Linum Hamilton was 78 years old and was leaving a First Transit Incorporated bus yard in Compton when his car was struck by a Jeep, according to his fellow union members, the Teamsters Local 572. And it was so shocking because over half of his fellow Teamsters actually watched the accident. He'd worked for three decades with the MTA before retiring, and he spent the last eight years with First Transit, a contract line that serves about eight routes in the South Bay. So it's really sad that this has happened.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Other tributes? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked that we adjourn in memory of Dr. Wayman McCoo, who's the father of singer and founding member of the Fifth Dimension, Marilyn McCoo, and also his other daughter, Glenda Wiener, who's a TV personality currently on staff with Yvonne Burke. Dr. McCoo was a longtime Los Angeles physician, who gained the reputation early on for treating holistic medicine rather than concentrating just on the condition. His family moved to the city of L.A. in early 1950s. He passed away as a result of pneumonia at the age of 94 on Friday, October 17th. He was born in Uphala, Alabama. He was the only child of the town's only black physician. He graduated from Morehouse Preparatory High School and attended Talak Dega College, where he joined his fraternity. Upon graduation, he went to New York to pursue a lifelong dream as an entertainer. He performed with the Fletcher Henderson and Jones Boys Trio. In '34, he left show business, enrolled at Mahari Medical School in Nashville, Tennessee, where he met his late wife, Mary Holliday. They later set up medical practice in Columbia, Georgia, where he was active in many civil rights movements. He enjoyed playing the piano, as well as, he was an artist, photographer, and also a writer. His memorial services are today at Angela Shino Home.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.